All right, I think we're good to go. Okay, I'm going to call to order this meeting of the November 7, 2019 City of Nashua Planning Board. Mr. Secretary, can you call the roll?
Yes. Mayor Donches, Mike Peterson.
President.
Scott Leclair.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Edward Weber.
Here.
Alderman David Tenza. Alderman Marion Muzilia-Goya. Jerry Pucci. Maggie Harper. Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Okay, so we have five folks here for quorum and everybody's a regular member, so they'll be all participating in voting. So we have in front of us here some minutes from the October 17, 2019 Planning Board meeting. Has anybody had a chance to review those minutes and want to make a motion either way as to whether they're acceptable as written?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
So a motion by Mr. Varley to approve the minutes as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Any abstentions from that meeting? I think we're all were here, so, okay, so that motion passes. Communications, Roger?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the planning board. If you turn to your packet, and I'll go over the three items the board received since we mailed the packet to you last week. We have a communication dated today's date, November 7, from Attorney Dory Clark, Deputy Corporation Counsel, regarding Old Business Item Number One, 7 Gaffney Street. You have a communication, it's an email from Jerry Rappucci to Linda McGee and Scott Leclair regarding waiver letter, excuse me, waiver request letter in your packet. And then for Case Number Three, which is at 4 R Dentistry, you have a revised site plan. And for your general, you should have a purple sheet that gives you the criteria for the two waiver criteria for subdivision or site plan regulations.
Got it.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. All right, thanks. Any report of committees?
No meeting.
Okay. All right, so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and move forward with the agenda. First, I'm going to go ahead and read the procedure of the meetings and hearings. So the procedure of the meeting and hearings are as follows. After each legal notice of conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision is read by myself, the board will determine if the application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin at which time the applicant or representative will be given time to present an overview and description of their project. They shall speak to whether or not they agree with the recommended staff stipulations, and the board will then have an opportunity to ask relevant follow-up questions of the applicant or staff. I'll then ask for testimony from the audience. First, I'll ask for anyone wishing to speak in opposition or concerned to a plan to come forward and speak. If you so choose to come forward, please come to the microphone and state your name and the address for the record. This will be the time for you to express your concerns or ask questions you may have regarding the plan. Next, I'll ask for testimony from anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The board will then ask any relevant follow-up questions of the applicant. The applicant will be given, then be given a rebuttal period, at which time they'll respond to any concerns raised by the public testimony. If so necessary, I will allow one public member to respond only to those items brought forth during the applicant's rebuttal period. After this has been completed, the public hearing will end and the board will resume a public meeting, at which time we will deliberate and vote on the application before us. I'd ask that both sides keep their remarks to the subject at hand and not repeat what has already been said. We want to be fair to everyone and make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and considering all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua Revised Ordinances for Conditional Special Use Permits, Site Plans, and Subdivision Plans. I'd thank everybody for their interest and courteous attention, and ask that if you do have a cellphone at this time, you go ahead and put on a vibrate or turn it off. Okay. So first up, Old Business Conditional Special Use Permits, there are none. Old Business Subdivision Plans, Case Number One, Gerald P. Rappucci, owner, proposed two-lot subdivision. This property is located at 7 Gaffney Street. I'd remind the board that this item was tabled from our October 17, 2019 meeting. So we do have some, obviously, some information in our packets that was given to us. Does anybody want to make a motion as to whether to pull this off the table? And I think, maybe remind me, Adam, we tabled this specific to sidewalk discussions and getting feedback from our Corporation Counsel.
I believe that's correct.
Okay, thanks. All right, anybody want to make that motion? Mr. Weber?
Make a motion to remove from the table.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Weber to remove new, or old business, Case Number One, from the table. And do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes, okay. So I guess at this time, I would give, does the applicant have any further information?
We want to technically reopen the public hearing.
Oh, we have need to do that first, sorry. While you're walking up. So can I have a motion to reopen the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
So you have a motion to reopen the public hearing by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? That motion passes. Hearing's open. All right, Mr. Pucci?
Gentlemen, thank you. Yeah, this has been, obviously, several weeks waiting for this feedback, and it only came at like four o'clock today, so I appreciate the fact that you really haven't had a chance to look at it. I looked at it a couple of times, and maybe would have to refer to it if I raise something that is in here. The bottom line of this is this. Obviously, it's my perception that it's not proper to collect these funds when the funds are not associated to the specific development that's before the board. Now, I'll just remind the board that in our meeting in July with the Aldermanic Subcommittee Meeting, it was presented by virtually everyone, including you, Mr. Chairman, in that meeting, that these funds were collected, and part of the justification for these funds was that they are then used in the same quadrant of the city to build other sidewalks where they're needed more than this specific case. That was not only you, but Director Marshon, and I believe the Planning Department as well. It's not the case. In August 22, the Board of Public Works took $15,000 out of the sidewalk fund to look at bike paths, which is exactly the reason that I raised the concern about the way this is done. And the, I don't think anybody is doing anything intentionally inappropriate, but it's an exact example of why these funds should not be collected this way without the checks and balances that the statutes require. Now, when I went through the reply of Legal, I was expecting, I was not expecting Legal to turn around and say, "That Rappucci's a smart guy, he's right and we're wrong." I wasn't expecting that at all. But one thing that I think they did point out is that, again, as you all know, you have the right to control this fee. It's completely within the jurisdiction of the board. I withdrew my request for the waiver and to make the contribution in lieu of the sidewalks when I was here the last time, and just ask for a specific waiver. The attorney's letter tells you, you can give that. If you find it to be a hardship, I think it's a terrible hardship on me. It's not only expensive, it's going to change the way my property is going to have sidewalks right in front of it when nobody else does. I think it's an appearance issue. It's not only an aesthetic issue, it's trip points. The attorney makes a comment in here that the Planning Department never said that they don't recommend sidewalks in here again. I think that's kind of contradictory to the truth. If the Planning Department wanted sidewalks on this site, they would have submitted a recommendation that there should be sidewalks on this project. They didn't do that. They didn't make that recommendation. So I'm just, this has got to come to an end. Between the Engineering Department taking months, this was originally submitted in like April or May, and it took a ton of time for feedback to come before it even was brought to the board, and then a ton of time for this. Winter is coming on me. I'll just amend my, I'll amend my presentation to be, I want the waiver, obviously, I just want you to say, "Yeah, this isn't working the way they said it was working. These monies are not going only to sidewalks. It's going, it's subverting the budgetary process in the city. The Planning Department is collecting that money and handing it to the Board of Public Works, and the Board of Public Works is spending it the way they want, and that's improper. That is an improper thing." I also noticed that while I went to great lengths to point that out to Legal, that that's what was happening, that was not addressed in their reply. They didn't make any comment at all in this, in this reply about the propriety of funds being handled that way in the city. It's not about 5,200 bucks. It's not about that. It's about the Planning Board directing, making a direction to people to pay funds into the city that subverts the budgetary process in the city. And I believe that's improper. I hope you agree with me, but I will amend my previous thing to say, if you don't agree with me, if my only choice is to pay this, to pay, to make this contribution instead of being forced to install sidewalks that I think virtually no one thinks are needed there, then of course I will, I will opt to make the contribution rather than do that. But that's, as far as the sidewalk fee goes, that's really all I have to say about it, and I appreciate your patience.
Thank you. I guess, I just have a question. I mean, you've had a chance to review the letter as well as we have from Corporation Counsel, I mean, albeit short. So you are asking to remove the request for waiver of 190-212. That's correct?
Well, 190-212, I think, is the actual sidewalk ordinance.
Right.
That allows for the contribution in lieu.
Right.
Well, I actually requested that the last time I was here.
But the--
I, my engineering company had submitted that as part of the application.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, yeah, I'm amending that to say, if you don't grant me the full relief, which you certainly have the power to do, and this letter says you do, if you don't grant me the complete waiver for no contribution, then I would rather do that than either not get my project approved. She recommends that the project could be denied. I don't really think that's true, but that's neither here nor there. I don't think that's really a feasible option. So, yes, I'm not, I'm reinstating that with the understanding that I'm only doing that because if you don't grant me the waiver on, I don't remember the ordinance, it's 148, I think?
190-148 is the ordinance for a general waiver, essentially.
Right, which is what I'm really asking for, is just a general waiver. You don't, we don't think you need a sidewalk there, and I associated it in my last presentation to the way we handle utilities. If we, you know, an overhead utility waiver. If somebody needs it, then we make them put the overhead utility in. If they don't need it, we grant them a waiver. We don't grant them a waiver, when I say "we," you know what I mean. The Planning Board doesn't grant the utility waiver and turn around and say, "Okay, we'll let you not put in the underground utilities, but you've got to pay $5,000 for a study on bike paths." That's not the way it works on anything except this. So I don't know if that answers what you're asking.
Yeah, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I think what you're saying is basically, you're requesting in the first instance, just a general waiver.
Right.
But failing that, you would be willing to make the contribution--
To get--
--because that would be obviously the next best, that would be the preference.
That's, that's right, Mr. Varley. That's a summary of what I'm saying. And I do think there's new information here. I do think, we were always under the impression, I've obviously served for years on land use boards in Nashua, we were always under the impression that that money was exclusively for sidewalks in the city. We were told that repeatedly by multiple entities in the city, and that's just not true. That alone, to me, I hope, will make you rethink the Planning Board collecting this money like this. But yeah, Mr. Varley hit exactly what I meant.
All right, so I'm trying to make sense of this in my own head. So you're essentially asking for a waiver under 190-148 of a general waiver of the requirement for a sidewalk.
Right.
But you're asking for, if we deny that waiver, that you would request a waiver of 190-212?
Right. And I, and that--
Contribution.
That will be part of this record, obviously.
Sure.
So if it ever goes to court, you know, it would be clear to any arbitrating body that that was, that I didn't just walk in here and say, "Yes, please let me give you 5,200 bucks," which is what I care about. That's the only reason I try to make that distinction, is for that reason, so yeah, that's accurate.
Okay, I think that makes sense to me. Does the board have any other questions for Mr. Rappucci?
Thank you.
Thanks. We're in the hearing, I guess, so does anybody in the audience wish to speak in opposition or concern? Hearing none there? Does the board have any other questions while we're in the hearing for staff or Mr. Rappucci or his engineer?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Peterson? Yeah, I'll take his first. Go ahead. Mr. Peterson?
So, the order upon which we're going to determine things, first, we're going to look at NRO 190-148, the general waiver.
That's being requested by the applicant.
Correct.
In the testimony, anyway.
If that doesn't pass, then we'll go to NRO 190-212, the sidewalks in possession right away, the in lieu of procedure. Is that correct?
That's my understanding of what the applicant has asked, yep. I mean, we're in the hearing, so certainly we can call them back up if they need to.
And should the applicant not wish to go with the second level, then denial of the application completely? Is that the third?
Well, I think we can talk about that in the meeting, maybe, but this, at this point, we're in the hearing to, you know, ask questions of the--
Yeah, so that's--
I mean, you can certainly ask the applicant if that's, if they're clear.
But I think what he indicated--
You can come up, Mr. Rappucci, we're still in the hearing.
Is that if we weren't going to grant the general waiver, then he was--
I think it's important to get it cleared.
--willing to make the contribution.
Yep, I heard that.
So we wouldn't get, we wouldn't get past that one.
Which probably where we'll end up.
Yep.
Jerry Rappucci, I didn't give you my address the first time, 7 Gaffney Street. I understand what Mr. Peterson is asking. I think that the comment by the city attorney's reply is incorrect for the reason that I'm not refusing to put in sidewalks. Nobody has ordered me to put in sidewalks. You know, the, I think the only way that would, that would be a justifiable thing to actually deny my application is if I stood here and said, "I will not put sidewalks in there if somebody's ordering me to," or "I will not pay the fee if somebody's ordering me to." I think that would justify the board saying, "Well, sorry, but you have to do one of those two things, so we're not going to approve this." But that's never come up. She makes that recommendation, but nobody suggested I put sidewalks in. The recommendation from the Planning Department on my original application didn't come back and say, "We think that this application should have sidewalks in front of it." Didn't say that at all. And my engineer didn't submit plans that included sidewalks that I asked be removed. So I think that's, I'm glad that you asked this before you closed the public hearing, because I wouldn't have a chance to say this, but I never asked for that. It, you know, if that were to come to pass, ask me, but I've never said no to anything like that.
Okay.
You know, if you think I have, please tell me, and I'll think about it, but I don't think I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yep. Linda?
I just wanted to remind the board that we do have some outstanding comments from Engineering Department dated August 22. That still need to be addressed to the satisfaction of Engineering Department. If we could just add that as a stipulation if we decide to approve. It's actually in your original staff report.
Yeah, what was the date on it? The 22nd, I guess?
August 22.
Yeah, I think we have that written.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions from the board for the applicant or staff while in the hearing? No? Okay. This time, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing, move into the meeting, so. All right, so, I mean, we've heard a lot about this case so far, so, you know, we sort of have, has everybody had a chance to review that letter from Corporation Counsel, you know? So, you know, my own reading of this, I mean, they're essentially recommending three potential options, one of which is related to the general waiver that Mr. Rappucci has asked for as part of this latest hearing, 190-148. So I think, I guess that would have to be inserted as a stipulation either way, I guess, whether we approve it or don't approve it, if someone's making a motion. But the applicant has also indicated that, you know, if we feel strongly that 190-148 waiver criteria are not met, that they're willing to move forward with the 190-212 waiver that's listed in the staff report. So interested, I guess, on comments, anyone has. Mr. Varley?
So, I guess I would just start by saying, I think Mr. Rappucci is raising, you know, valid policy points about, you know, is, is the way the ordinance is structured currently, I mean, is, you know, is that the appropriate way, or is it an appropriate way to, you know, to raise funds for sidewalk construction that's not associated with the site? So, I mean, I think it's a valid point. And, and I, you know, I don't know the details about, you know, how the funds are spent by the Department of Public Works, although I would say, in terms of, you know, I think the ordinance is fairly clear and specific about how the funds are intended to be and how they're directed to be spent. So I think it's a little bit beyond the scope of this board, you know, once we exercise our discretion one way or the other. I mean, I think I have, I would have two concerns with granting the general waiver under 190-148. And the first relates to sort of how we have historically interpreted the ordinance and the standards that we've applied. I think at this point, pretty consistently. And, you know, we've made some adjustments over time, including, you know, last year in terms of how we calculate the fee amount, for example. But we pretty consistently applied the payment in lieu waiver as sort of the threshold waiver. I mean, I can't, I can't personally think of an instance where we have simply said we're going to waive the requirement for sidewalks entirely under 190-148 because of an undue hardship. And I guess, I would go back to something that I've thought about in the past, which is, yes, you've got this, this general waiver provision under 190-148, but we've got a more specific waiver provision with respect to the payment in lieu provision, the 190-212. And it seems to me that that sort of furthers the argument that, you know, the payment in lieu in and of itself wouldn't be undue hardship, because if that were the case, you know, I don't see what purpose the 190-212 waiver provision would serve. So it seems to me there would have to be some, some basis beyond simply a requirement of the contribution under 190-212 to make the, you know, the sidewalk provision an undue hardship, to, you know, to waive it completely under 190-48, 148. So, you know, for both of those reasons, you know, I would be inclined to say, you know, consistent with pretty longstanding precedent, and also, I think, with the structure of the ordinances, I would not be in favor of granting a general waiver 190-148, but would obviously then be, you know, willing to accept the contribution lieu as the plan clearly meets the requirements for that, that waiver provision. So, and, you know, again, that's not in any way, you know, discounting the, you know, the points that Mr. Rappucci is making in terms of, you know, whether the ordinance should be structured in this way. But I, I just personally think that's, that particular issue is beyond what the Planning Board is tasked with doing here, so.
Okay. Other comments?
I agree with Adam.
Anybody else? Peterson?
Well, my views are the same. The general waiver, I don't think that makes sense, and applying NRO 190-212 consistently among applicants makes sense to me.
Yeah, so my, my feeling is, you know, having read Corporation Counsel's information and looking at 190-148, there's really two criteria that have to be met for that to go by. One is hardship, okay? The other is unnecessary hardship, obviously. The second one is, the waiver can't be, you know, contrary to the spirit and intent. So my read of, you know, granting the 190-212 waiver is that it's meeting the spirit and intent by doing that, because you are essentially, you know, we feel we're collecting some contribution towards a sidewalk, and when the ordinance is strictly, you have to put in a sidewalk. So when I look at 190-148, when the ordinance says you need to put in a sidewalk, you know, so I look at one thing, is the sidewalk an unnecessary hardship to the applicant? Maybe it is. That could be true. But if I waive that, is it contrary to the spirit and intent? I'd say maybe, yes, it is. So, so it fails on the second criteria to me, without the contribution to the sidewalk fund. So that's my two cents, so. So I guess I'm saying I'm in agreement with Mr. Varley as well, maybe for a different reason, but. Mr. Ballinger, anything in your end?
Generally speaking, I concur with comments made by other board members. I think a waiver under NRO 190-148 is much too broad for the consideration of this particular matter, given that there's other provisions that this board could consider with respect to particular waiver requests regarding the specificity of this particular instance. So, in essence, I concur with what my fellow board members have already testified to.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Comments? Mr. Varley?
Yeah, I guess, just a process question.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess I just open this up, but because Mr. Rappucci, at least in the first instance, requested a waiver under 190, he sort of, you know, made it in the alternative, so 190-148, if we were to not grant that waiver, then 190-212. So I think we should probably take, but again, I welcome your input, but I think we should probably take a motion, consider a motion first as to the approval or denial of the waiver request under 190-148, since it's specifically been placed before, or, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ballinger?
I would concur with Mr. Varley. I guess my only question, and it's more of a bookkeeping one, does this need to be added as a stipulation? I believe right now we're working with 12 comments that would include the condition for addressing Mr. Mendola's comments of August 22. Do we need to add a 13th, or do we renumber from one with regard to the waiver for NRO 190-148? Do we need to add a 13th, or do we renumber from one with regard to the waiver for NRO 190-148?
I don't know, I think you could put the request for waiver 190-148 as, say, stipulation three, renumber stipulat-, you know, you know, address that in the motion. Include the request for waiver 190-212 as stipulation four, you know? You know, and then renumber the rest of them. I don't know. Does the staff have any comment regarding that?
I think that's the perfect way to do it, added a stipulation.
And you could just address it all in one motion, just as long as they're in the right order, I think that makes sense to me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Alright, anybody want to make a motion?
So, we've read that 12, so it's dated as August 22nd.
Yeah, the engineering letter was the 22nd of August with comments. Mr. Varley, do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I would make a motion to approve Old Business Case Number One, finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO Section 190-138G. And that will be with a total of 13 stipulations. The stipulations one and two, both being waiver requests. The first, for waiver of 190-282B9, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two, being pressed from 190-221C, again, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. There will be a newly added stipulation number three. And that stipulation will indicate that the applicant's request for a waiver with respect to the construction of sidewalks under Section 190-148 of the revised ordinances is denied. Then, original stipulation three will be renumbered four, and that is a supplemental request from the applicant with the 190-148 waiver having been denied. A request for a waiver of, with respect to the construction of sidewalks under 190-212A1, and that read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, and that the applicant has agreed to make a contribution pursuant to the board's direction at the, in the amount of $5,200. Then, original four through 11 renumbered as five through 12, and then adding a 13th stipulation, reading that prior to the issuance of a building permit, the comments from the City Engineering Department in a letter from Joe Mendola dated August 22nd, 2019, be addressed to the satisfaction of the Engineering Department.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve with the specific waivers as stated by Mr. Varley. And the remainder of the stipulations, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None?
The motion passes.
Thanks. Okay, so, moving on. Alright, so, next up, I have Old Business Subdivision Plan, Case Number Two, B R A R Holdings LLC owner. This is a proposed lot line relocation, this property is at 27 and 31 through 33 Broad Street. We're gonna hear that, you know, in conjunction, this, this was tabled from October 17th, but we would also hear that in conjunction with Old Business Site Plan, Case Number Three, for the same owner at the same location, which was also tabled from October 17th, 2019. So, I guess, first, we'd have to make a motion to remove this, these two items individually from the table. Does anybody want to make a motion as to, first, the subdivision plan?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Ballinger?
I'll make a motion to untable Old Business Item Number Two.
So, we have a motion to remove from the table Old Business Case Number Two. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Regarding Case Number Three, anybody want to make a motion as to whether that can be removed from the table?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Ballinger?
I'll make a motion to remove Old Business Site Plan, Case Number Three, from the table.
Alright, so we have a motion to remove Case Number Three from the table as well. Do we have a second for that? Second by Mr. Weber. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. Okay. I think we probably need to reopen the hearing as well on that to hear from the applicant. Do we have a motion to reopen the hearing? Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to reopen the hearing on Old Business Subdivision Case Two and Old Business Site Plan Number Three.
Okay. Second to that. So, we have a motion to reopen the hearing for both Old Business Case Number Two and Case Number Three. Do we have a se-, you have a second from Mr. Varley? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We seconded to reopen.
Aye.
Ballinger and Barney, yeah? Okay, so you're up, you've got a new site plan, maybe you can ex-
Sure. My name's George Chadwick with Betray Design, representing the applicant tonight. As the board recalls during the deliberations of both the lot line adjustment and the site plan, some question came up regarding the circulation of the driveway. There was some concern from the neighbors as to the traffic on Pine Hill Ave. And before I get into that, first, I'd like to just ask that a second waiver be requested for the lot line adjustment. I believe it's in your packets, and it has to do with the Planning Board Bylaw, Section 9.5, and we're asking for a waiver of the 30-day appeal period. When the board continued the meeting last month, it put us in a bind. We're hoping to get this thing paid before the 15th of this month, when plants possibly could close, so. If the board is willing to waive that, it will allow us to proceed and still get this done this year.
Okay.
So, just like to add that to the lot line adjustment. We do concur with the conditions that staff has placed on the application as well as that one additional waiver.
And that's on the subdivision?
That's on the subdivision, correct.
Correct.
Regarding the lot, the site plan, there was some concern, as I stated earlier, from the neighbors regarding the amount of traffic on Pine Hill Ave. And I believe the board wanted the staff to talk to fire and engineering regard, excuse me, traffic and engineering regarding a one-way circulation from Broad Street out to Pine Hill Road. And I believe they've done that, I hope there's information in your packets from them.
We do have that.
But we are willing to agree to that stipulation that would be one-way traffic from Broad Street out to Pine Hill Road. By creating the exit onto Pine Hill Road, we've actually reduced the pavement width. Before, if you recall, we had 24 feet wide. I don't think it's necessary that it be 24 feet wide for a one-way driveway, but in talking with traffic and fire, they would like it to be 20 feet wide. 20 feet wide is larger than what your regulations call for, that being 15 feet. So, that results in a waiver. There should be a waiver request in your packets for that in addition to two waivers that I spoke about last hearing, and that had to do with landscaping and lighting. One last item, I guess, to note, just recently, there was some discussion about cut-through traffic from Broad Street using our drive out to Pine Hill Road. So, in order to calm traffic a little bit, my clients agreed to add a speed bump up where Pine Hill, I mean, where the driveway ties into Pine Hill Road. And that is shown on the plan that, that you have in front of you, I believe.
Yes, it is, yes, yeah.
With that, were here to answer any questions, like to make it as simple as I can.
Okay. Any other questions? The 20-foot, I don't know that we have a, does that require an actual?
It does, for a one-way.
Yeah, it's a maximum, it's a maximum of 15 feet, so it's a waiver.
What would that be a waiver of, though? Is that a specific?
Yeah, there's a section I quoted in here.
Yeah, okay.
190-279A1, requires one-way driveway be a maximum of 15 feet wide.
Oh, it's the newer one.
Yeah, it's a new one.
Okay, yeah, you got it right there, okay. Alright, so we've got that, yeah. Okay, other questions, Mr. Weber?
What is the stop bar?
A stop bar is a painted bar on the ground, like you'd see at all intersections, where it basically has the car stopped back five feet from the edge of driveway.
Okay, just clarification.
Yep, no, sure.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Were you inquiring as to whether it would be standard pane or whether it be a thermoplastic application?
Oh, it says thermal there, I just want to know what the stop bar was.
Understood, thank you, thank you.
Alright. You got two do-not-enter signs facing Pine Hill.
Correct.
And then two facing up towards Pine Hill at the other entrance, yeah? Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Ballinger?
Will you need to supplement the stop bar with stop signs? Sometimes those can be placed back-to-back on the do-not-enter signs. I, obviously, the stop bar, and I'm not trying to make it overkill, but, or would stop signs be necessary in this instance?
We could add a stop sign if you'd like. To be honest with you, I thought it was on the plan, but I don't see it there, so, yeah, we'll add a stop sign.
Thank you.
One other thing.
Mr. Weber?
Would it be who view to add something as no through tra-, you know, not through traffic or something like that? I don't know. Passing through, no pass-through.
Yeah, I mean, if the board wants us to, I think sometimes you put too many signs in, people stop reading signs, right?
Yeah, okay.
And, yeah, in this instance, it's a driveway, it's a lot of parking, a lot of, you know, parking stalls, and it, it's not like it truly could be, you know, a cut-through road sign.
I totally agree, yeah.
It's got two do-not-enter signs.
We do, I, I think what he's looking to do is put one down on Broad Street so people don't use that as a, as a cut-through.
Oh, but you have do-not-enter signs down there as well, though, right?
Right, but they would be facing traffic going toward Broad Street versus them coming off of.
Oh, you mean going in, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they saw it happening, they don't want people to cut through, so they'd do something about it.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant? At this time, okay. While the hearing's open, anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the concern or have questions on the plan, please go ahead and come forward and just make sure you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Cindy Sloan, I'm at 11 Pine Hill Ave, right across. I have, what I have is on behalf of the abutters, we've gotten together, we've met with our alderman. I don't know if I can say "we" or if I have to say "I" in this, but either way. As far as the parking lot plan, that's not the issue that we're concerned with. On October, in our October meeting, we raised concern about business number eight. The staff report from that meeting stated that the purpose of the plan is to transfer 3,000 square feet, et cetera, from Lot 77 to Lot 5. We were given the impression, right or wrong, that the actual lot line change was a done deal and that the decision is made by zoning, not planning. We laughed, because, as I said, we had never heard about any of these lot line changes until that meeting. The following day, upon review of our meeting notes, we questioned why the wording of the staff report stated that the intent of that meeting was to transfer the property if that were the case, and if it had already been approved. We met with our alderman, we have spoken to zoning representatives at City Hall to determine how the expansion of this lot, granted a variance in 1970s, was approved without notice to abutters. One zoning rep did question if the land, if we thought that the land being considered was actually going to be commercial use. And yes, although not for a structural addition, it is being paved and is used for parking, and that is clearly an expansion of the business usage. Our alderman, Tom Lopez, spoke with Director Marchand, who affirmed that the property line had not yet been redrawn. And he spoke to Attorney Leonard for legal opinion. He was told that the planning board can stipulate traffic conditions on calming parking lot design and that the parking plan itself does appear to improve patient traffic flow. We are not arguing that point at all. What we are saying is that while adding this now may be an improvement to the business and adding more, piece by piece, could allow for more improvements and more expansion, we all brought our properties, including Dr. Bra, knowing what the zoning of each of our lots was. The fact that Dr. Bra owns adjacent RE-zoned property shouldn't allow him, any more than any of us, if we owned it, to change the usage of it to commercial simply by changing the line without a clearly approved zoning change, we feel. We've been told that the planning board approves plans to property changes also, but we question how the request to actually transfer land to expand this variance property is being decided on by this board, allowing the lot change to take place. Per Alderman Lopez, he did say that this was not considered a minor change, it was considered a major change, because this is open to public forum. Per Alderman Lopez, it seems that a lot line can be moved by the planning board without input from the neighbors, regardless of variances. And he referred the issue to Alderman O'Brien for the Committee for Infrastructure to review. Alderman O'Brien contacted me and states that he needs time to review this with others. Attorney Leonard stated that we have the right to appeal any decision made tonight. It's not what we're looking for. What we are asking for is a request to petition to have this lot line change vetted. We feel that we have a right, as a abutters, to be heard by the zoning board, as this is a zoning change. The process, as it appears to bypass, as is, appears to bypass the checks and balances of the rezoning and variance process. And the process is put into place to allow changes within limits.
Okay, so you're, I guess, just, to clarify, you do or don't have an issue with the use of the land for parking?
No, we do have an issue with the use of the extra land. We have an issue that they're taking what is RE-zoned and adding 3,000 feet to a commercially zoned property, bypassing any sort of zoning because he happens to own the property next door.
Right, we're not the zoning board.
But.
I'm asking a land use question. Do you, do you, do you have an issue with the use of that piece of land for parking?
Yes, I do, and we all do, becau-, well, I shouldn't say we all, but yes, you're adding now paving, you're acting, adding parking, you're turning what is now residential and green into business and parking. So, yes, when I said the parking, I mean, the, the, the design is not the issue that we have. We have the issue with the first portion of it, that you're allowing the taking of this residential property to be added, and who's to say not more next year if he sells to somebody else who wants to take more because that's all one packet? It is, it is two lots together, and he does own both, but he's taking what is residential. I had to request a variance because I needed three feet of property right next door, right across the street. I was not granted that variance. I had to buy three feet of property from a neighbor two houses up because they were so strict on me being three feet short, that I had to buy additional property. They've been very strict, they've been very strict with the- They've been very strict, they've been very strict with the gentleman on the corner, but in this case, because he happens to own both properties, he's just being allowed to make changes without going through anybody who can look at this and say, wait a minute, and I know, I was, we were told that there is a loophole or something in the state that kind of allows this, but that it needs to be looked at, and it needs to be addressed, and, and Mr. Lopez has said that he is addressing this. And Alderman O'Brien said the same thing, because looking at this, they said that it, it wouldn't work if I tried to do this to this property, it only is working because he happens to own both. And we feel very strongly that that needs to be addressed.
I just want to clarify in terms of process, I mean, you, you indicated you think this, you know, sort of came to us without any vetting on the zoning issue, but my understanding, and staff can confirm this, is that, you know, as with, I think, any other plan that comes into the planning department, there is a zoning review that is conducted with respect to the plan, and a determination is made either that zoning relief is required or that it's not. So, the, the lot line relocation is exclusively within the jurisdiction of the planning board, not the zoning board. So, the question would be, does the, the lot line relocation, you know, in addition to planning board approval, is there some zoning variance that's required? And again, I'll ask staff to confirm, but my understanding is that, that the zoning director here determined that no zoning relief is required. So, it's not, it's not a matter of this not having gone through any zoning review, it's a question of a determination having been made by the individual who is responsible for determining whether zoning relief, relief is required in connection with the plan, having made a determination that it's not required.
But, as a butters, we feel that zoning, signing off on that, we had a right to be given an opportunity to speak on the fact that it is being changed zoning, the zoning usage is being changed on that property. And so, we feel very strongly, if he was, if this was two homes, if this, if there's nothing, you know, if it was staying the same, RA, RA, but they're taking RA and using it for commercial, and we feel very strongly that the zoning board, not, I'm not saying the planning board, but the zoning board should have given us the opportunity to represent ourselves there.
Right, I'm, I'm just saying it never, it nev- it didn't come before the zoning board.
Right, but.
Just because, again, because there are other issues that may, that may impact the use of a property, but maybe within the scope of, of what's approved under the existing zoning ordinances, so, you know, you may not agree with how your neighbor's using their property a particular way, but it may, it may still not go before the zoning board because it may not be something that requires zoning relief. Do you, do you see what I'm saying?
Well, the legal department and the aldermen said that we should have had the opportunity, it wasn't addressed with us, it was done without us even knowing. We had no idea until the signs were put up that this was even a thought. One person said that it was because they got a variance on a building three years ago, and that was for, that was for a handicapped entrance, that had nothing to do with land usage. So, we've been told a number of different things, but basically what it boils down to is residential is being converted to commercial in a neighborhood that none of us would be allowed to do this, and we feel very strongly that we should be given the opportunity to face zoning. I can't do that here, I mean, we, we, but, we have been, it has been suggested to us that we ask that time be given so that we have the opportunity to face zoning and have it vetted with our input. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan or have questions? Anybody wishing to speak in favor, this would be of the subdivision or the plan? Applicant, uh, do you, would you like to respond to anything, uh, you heard the, the abutter testimony?
Yeah, um, regarding the abutters' concern, um, all I can say is we follow the, the city process. We did get a sign-off from the zoning official in the city, um, that no variances were needed. I believe the avenue that would need to be taken by an abutter if they had a concern would be to appeal at the Superior Court. And that's how they appeal any decision that, that the planning board makes. I don't believe that an abutter can take this piece of property to the zoning board and, and get some sort of clarification. There hasn't been an application submitted in front of them, um, so there's nothing for them sort of to appeal, they're not the owner of the parcel. So, I don't see a mechanism that they could bring it to zoning to get, um, some sort of clarification. I think all they could do would be ask the, the zoning official in town, uh, excuse me, in the city, and, and I believe the city has already gone through that process. So, um, times of an essence here for us, um, you know, we're trying to get this thing done this year, um, that's the reason for the waiver I've requested on the lot line adjustment, um, but, uh, um, you know, i- if the board has any concerns or thoughts, I guess I'd like to, to hear them before the, the hearing gets closed, so that I can respond to you, um, to any specific question, and I don't get cut out of the, the response part of it, so.
I guess I would just ask staff if they can sort of just confirm on the process side, you know, what happened in terms of the review and what determination was made, I, I think we discussed this a little bit last time, but just a refresher on that.
Yeah, so, we actually met with the applicant, um, and we went through this, and at the time, um, the deputy zoning manager determined that no variances were needed. Back in two thousand, I believe it was thirteen or sixteen, they had come in, got a special ex- a special exception to expand their use, and, um, at that time it was granted. When they came in this time for the minor parking addition, and it's actually, I think, maybe part of six spaces that'll be in the new portion, the determination was made by zoning that it, that did not need to go back to the zoning board to seek relief. If the applicant were to be adding on to the building, um, definitely that would be something that would have to come back to zoning. If, um, they were to turn the other lot into a commercial use, that would require going back. For this, it was determined that they did not need to go back, they would just need to go straight to planning board. We've met with them, I even have a memo from the zoning manager dated October seventeen, I'm sorry, dated September thirteenth, uh, that he had no comments on these projects, that they did not need to go to zoning board. I saw an email today from Corporation Counsel. From what I recall, it did not indicate that it would need to be, to go to zoning as well. So, that's, that's how we got here today, it's been totally thoroughly vetted, it's gone through the system, and, um, you know, it was thought that it could go straight to planning board.
And, and just to, if, if you, if you know, further clarify, i- in this circumstance where we do have, you know, a, a residentially zoned lot abutting, a commercially zoned lot, is there, is there some sort of materiality or threshold above which, you know, a lot line relocation would trigger zoning, or is that more just a function of, you know, the residential lot has to meet the minimum lot size requirements, so there's only so much, I, I guess I'm just wondering, is there, is this sort of, is that a, just a determination that was made by the, by the zoning director, or is there a, sort of a specific objective threshold above which you would say, okay, now zoning relief is required?
Yeah, I mean, I can't answer for him, but, I mean, this is pretty small, both lots meet, far exceed what's required in the RA zone. The other lot, I know there was some confusion, too, people thought that the lot was being rezoned, the, the lot's not being rezoned, it's still an RA zone, it's still residential. You know, I don't know if it was like, if, if it reaches a certain threshold, it would be required, like I said, if the building were expanding, they were adding more on, then it would definitely have to go back, but I, I just believe that this was probably considered a minor, um, adjustment, so that it, it was not required.
Okay.
If, if I may, uh, parking is considered a necessary use, it's allowed in a residential district, it's allowed in a commercial district, it's not considered, uh, it's a permitted use in both of those, in, in that same district.
So, even.
Whether, whether it was used by variance, and just because a, a few of the spaces are partially eclipsed by, um, this lot line relocation, uh, the parking is still permitted in the, the zone.
Even under the RA standards, right, yeah.
As it is in a residential property as well.
Thank you.
Can you just clarify for me, I mean, is, uh, both lots, are they both still RA, and one just has a special exception on it?
Yeah, they both are RA, um, I believe in seventy-two, the dentist got a, a use variance to allow the dentist to be there, and again, in two thousand thirteen, um, they came in for a special exception to add on to it for, at the entrance and so on and so forth, but they still are both RA-zoned.
Right, that's kind of what, so, yeah, we have a June two thousand, June two thousand thirteen zoning board letter in our packet, and it seems to indicate that both, they're, these aren't commercial lots.
Excuse me?
These are not commercial.
They are not, the residential lots were the commercial use on one of them, which they got the relief for.
Got through a special exception.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Other questions? No? Okay, um, the procedure of the meeting does allow, if there was one other person in the audience that wishes to speak or say anything else, I'd allow it at this time. There you go, all set? Okay. Anything further from the board for the applicant or staff while we're in the hearing?
No.
All right, at this time, I go ahead and close the hearing, move into the meeting. So, we have in front of us two items, the subdivision plan and the site plan, uh, both of the same lot. I think we really, um, you know, the applicant, in my opinion, has sort of cleared up the site plan concerns that I think the board had earlier.
Right.
Which was that two-way traffic on Pine Hill Ave. Comfortable with the, um, the single direction traffic and the do not enter signs, the speed bump, I think, is a good, good addition as well, slow down the traffic going on to Pine Hill. So, personally, okay with the plan. Anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I, I mean, I concur with you in terms of the site plan, and I would just also note that, you know, at, at the last meeting, there was one abutter who raised this concern about the, the impact of the lot line adjustment and the sort of change, or perceived change in zone, but every other abutter was, the concern they were raising was related to the traffic and the traffic flow, and that's, I mean, that's what we had asked the applicant to address, and I agree, and I think they've, they've done that appropriately and, and responded to the concerns we've raised, so.
Any other comments?
No.
Okay. Anybody willing to make a motion? I'd start with subdivision. Please, that would be old business case number two. Anybody willing to make a motion?
Be willing to make that.
I'd remind that the applicant has asked for a waiver of our thirty-day, um, appeal.
Oh, yeah, we probably, I don't, I mean, we've, you know, applicants have asked for that waiver in the past, and we've granted, I mean, really, it's at the applicant's own risk.
Right. Yeah, I don't have an issue with that.
You know, if they, if they did get construction during the appeal period, they risked it, you know, they could force it to stop construction.
I think traditionally, Mr. Chair, there, there's, there's, there's at least one pit that's opened, um, I won't mention the name, but they, they could conceivably go past November fifteenth if they had to, I don't think that should necessarily affect our determination tonight, so, um, it might not be their pit of choice, but, um, I, I would agree with Mr. Varley, if they're proceeding at their own risk, so, all right.
Okay. All right, Mr. Varley?
So, I would make a motion to approve old business number two. Finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in subdivision NRO, section one ninety dash one thirty-eight G. And, um, this approval will include a total of nine stipulations. The first being a waiver request with respect to one ninety dash two eighty-two B nine for an existing conditions plan, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. The second, um, stipulation is written in the staff report. The third stipulation, um, again, being a waiver request with respect to, um, a waiver of the section ninety-four point five of the planning board bylaws requiring a thirty-day appeal period, um, and that will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation, and then four through nine as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve with the stipulations as indicated by Mr. Varley, do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Weber? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? None, that motion passes. Uh, regarding old business site plan, case number three? Anybody willing to make a motion there? Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve old business, uh, site plan case number three for our holdings LLC, thirty-one through thirty-three Broad Street. Motion to approve, finding that plan meets the requirements of NRO one ninety dash one forty-six, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the request for waiver of NRO one ninety dash two seven-nine, which shows existing conditions on the adjacent properties, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number two, the request for waiver of NRO one ninety dash two seven-nine, requiring lighting, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number three, the waiver for request of NRO one ninety dash two seven-nine pertaining to a landscaping plan is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number four, the request for waiver of NRO one ninety dash two zero-nine, which requires a one-way driveway be a maximum of fifteen feet wide, is granted, finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. And comments number five through ten as written in the staff report.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve, this is, uh, case number, old business case number three, um, with the stipulations and waivers as indicated by Mr. Ballinger, do you have a second on it?
I have a question.
Second at first, maybe, yeah, and then we can discuss.
Second.
Yeah, second. Go ahead, discussion, yeah?
With stipulation number four, it says the road, the driveway is a maximum of fifteen feet, but the drawing says twenty feet.
Yeah, we're.
Right.
The requirement is it's a maximum of fifteen, they're asking for a waiver so they can make it twenty.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is good.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? None, that motion passes. Okay. Thanks. Okay, so moving on, um, uh, old business case number four, that motion, that case is tabled, um, to our November twenty-first meeting. New business conditional special use permits, there are none, new business subdivision plans, there are none, new business site plan, uh, case number five, that, um, I believe is postponed, yep, to December fifth at this time.
Yeah.
Other business case number one, review of tentative agenda, so we have a tentative agenda in our packet here, has anybody a chance to take a look at it and see if there are any, um, proposals of regional impact?
I looked at it, there is none.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Weber, there are no proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda, do you have a second on that? Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion passes. Okay, um, any further discussion items?
Just a question that came up today, um, and it's probably none of our jurisdiction, but seems that the, uh, department, engineering department, uh, is using.
but it seems that the department, Engineering Department, is using these funds for something else. Is it something that the staff should talk to them, ask them about, or is that just...
I think they're aware of that, and I think they're doing some corrective action. Sorry, my mic's off. I understand that Director Marchand's talked to Public Works Division, and they are aware of that ordinance provision. I think it was just an oversight, probably.
Done.
Okay, any further discussion items? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So, a motion to adjourn by Mr. Weber, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, that motion passes, and we are adjourned at 8:10.